No, no.
Hello.
Nope.
Hello.
Nope. You're good.
I'm good. You can hear me?
Yep.
Laura, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, just try a different one for now.
As long as Laura can hear me, we're fine.
That's the most important thing.
Hello. Yeah.
City Council Committee on Ordinances and Legislation will now come to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadeem.
Here.
Counselor Dion.
Here.
Counselor Lee. Counselor Ferreira. Chairwoman Libby LeBeau.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one is citizens' input.
I have none.
Item two is proposed ordinance miscellaneous traffic referred May 25.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there an emergency preamble? Was there any?
This is a stop interjection.
No, sorry. Yeah, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Dion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item three would need to be lifted from the table. It's a proposed ordinance for water and sewer rates. It was tabled May 11. Do we have a motion to lift from the table?
Can I just ask, Madam Chairwoman, are we anticipating having a discussion or are we looking to just wait until the budget?
Well, we can send it to the council as is for action without recommendation, but right now we can't do anything.
I guess before we lift it from the table, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if, I mean, if there's no appetite, I mean, we've got three members. If there's no appetite right now, I know we had some conversation in finance. If we're not finalized, having a discussion about, you know, the financial aspects of it, like the expenses and the salaries, then I don't know that it makes a whole lot of sense to refer it out of committee, is what I'm saying. And since we really haven't had a full conversation, I mean, we had a conversation at the last meeting, but I don't know that, and we solved anything or came to any consensus on anything for like an approval or anything like that, so.
You don't have to do anything with it.
All I'm saying is if it's going to be rejected, it doesn't make sense to approve or not approve. We don't really have a full understanding of what the will of the council is in terms of the expenses, that's all. I mean, I'll lift it from the table if.
We can lift it from the table and discuss it, and we can table it again, or we can send it for action, with or without a recommendation. There's only three of us.
Okay, I'm just going to repeat myself, but I'll make a motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table made by Counselor Kadeem. Do you have a second? No second? Anything further?
It's fine.
Item four is proposed ordinance changes to the flood plains. This was referred to us at our last meeting. And we have an amended version in our ordinance format.
Madam Chairwoman, through you. So can I ask the building inspector, this is just technical changes that are required by FEMA.
Correct.
Right, so nothing unusual, the ordinary?
There was very.
Can you just go to the microphone or to the table?
So, yes, there was, this on, there was some changes to some of the maps. Most of them consisted of areas in the forest where they enlarged the flood plains.
The flood plains.
Other than that, this is all FEMA requesting that we bring our ordinance up to date with all the information that they provided to us.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So we need to, the motion would be to adopt first reading as amended.
Should this be done with an emergency preamble saying something?
So we have two council meetings in June, and it needs to be adopted by July 8, I believe.
July 6.
July 6.
Yes.
So we have time.
Okay.
So, motion to adopt first reading as amended made by Counselor Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Thank you. Item five is a proposed ordinance, the salary schedules, also tabled May 11. Same as the other item, we need a motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table?
Second.
Motion to lift from the table made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Mrs. Sadi, this is the same format that it came down to us originally, correct? No changes have been made?
That's correct, Counselor.
And we had sent it back for changes or requests for changes with a schedule in it. I, what's that I'm looking for?
Steps.
Steps. In it. And that did not come back, correct?
That is correct. So, as the administration pointed out at the last meeting and the meeting before, it's not the opinion of the administration that the steps would be advantageous to giving the mayor the ability to hire somebody at what they're worth based on their experience and their education, as opposed to being able to present ordinances in Section 301 not to exceed gives a lot more ability to look at the person's resume and look at what they are worth to the community and set their salary based on the net to exceed. Keeping in mind, of course, that these salaries are all budgeted and quite frankly, to some extent, the city council has the first word at the beginning of every budget season as to what someone's salary is per se. I mean, not in total because you're budgeting, we're budgeting salaries and wages in a total number, but in essence, everyone's salary is included in the budget document itself and includes any potential increases at that particular time so that they're properly funded throughout the year. But we do believe that the not to exceed, which actually back in 2017 was this council or the council at the time's recommendation, and prior to that, Mrs. Coelho will note that there were steps in the budget or in these ordinances back in time, but the council at the time, as well as the administration at the time, felt that the not to exceeds was the better way to address these management positions.
Anything from the council? Counselor Kadeem?
So, again, just to go on record, I think part of, and the reason we had requested it, was because there was some discussion and conversation about, you know, the politics involved with the positions, right? So I think that was just going to create a little bit more transparency in terms of, you know, or I guess more of a safety net for counselors who felt that, you know, depending on what administration's in, who they're going to pay based on the net, you know, not to exceed, and based on what they feel is the qualifications, I think by having those steps still gave the administration flexibility, but also kind of had a safety net for counselors who, again, want to make sure that we weren't playing politics, if you would. So I thought it was going to be a happy medium, a balance there. So that's just my take on the situation, and I understand, and I try to make sure that everybody understands our role is legislative in nature, so that's what we need to do in terms of the administration on who they hire, what the salary is, as long as it's within the scale that we've outlined in the ordinance is really limited to that scope. But I will say the concern, I guess, in talking, I guess I am talking for my colleagues, but it's the fact that even though we get it, you know, we might approve a budget, right? We're looking at total salaries, right? So without, when you have a not to exceed, we're not really necessarily guaranteeing what that individual is going to be paid. We know they're not going to exceed the limits, or shouldn't exceed, I shouldn't say not, because we've got individuals who are exceeding the ordinances, but the intent is not to exceed what's in the ordinance. So, you know, we might get a bite at the apple in the beginning, see, based on what's being in there with the detail, you know, but we don't really necessarily have line item authority to say, okay, that's what we want to approve, right? So, you know, I know we can reject the budget, but we can't sit here and say, okay, you know, Mr. McCoy should be paid, I don't know, $200,000 or whatever the case may be, right? So, not that he's getting paid $200,000, I probably shouldn't have said that. So we don't have that when we're going through the budget document, right? And from my standpoint, and I've said this from the get-go, I think, and we, you know, I was just having a conversation with the building inspector in terms of looking at positions, doing comparative analysis, I think it's got to be about the position and not about the individuals, right? And I think the individuals come into play, but I think when we're looking at it from a legislative body, we should be looking at what is the position valued at, right? And what do we think, you know, whoever it is coming in is going to get paid this because we value this position at X, Y, and Z. Now, we could disagree. Now, it's incumbent upon the administration to find, based on what, you know, we've valued a position to be in, to find somebody who's in that position to get there. Now, whether or not, you know, listen, you've got somebody who you think would be a good fit, they may not have all the qualifications there, but have the intangibles that you can't teach to get them there. So if they come in and they get paid at the step one, it is what it is, right? Like, I think we all need to recognize if that's the direction we're going to go in, you know, you might have somebody that's overpaid at a step one because of qualifications, right? And we can take Mr. McCoy, for instance, right? So if we had, you know, if we had the city administrator at step one making X dollars, step two making X dollars, step three and step four, you know, where Mr. McCoy hasn't been in the position before, he would still be at step one, right? And we're giving him, you know, because now what he's getting, he's given essentially a hometown discount because he doesn't have the experience. When we look at the position, right, for an administrator, I make an argument that we're anywhere between 120 and 140 is not being competitive, right? The town of Westport's currently out looking for a town administrator, they're paying 145, right? And that's 145 plus. And we're asking, we're asking somebody to come to the city of Far River and run the day-to-day operation, because that's essentially what it is, at 140. That's $5,000 less, or whatever the case may be. And I know we've been all over the place with the administration, you know, town, city administrator, in terms of, are we going to pay 175? Are we going to pay whatever it is? I think from within this scope that we have, we should be making an effort to figure out how do we keep and retain quality people in the city of Far River, because that really is the challenge that we have, right? And how do we do that? And then how do we also maintain and eliminate the perception of the politics that have been played in the past, not saying that it's currently being played with this administration, but how do we get a safety net to ensure that that's not going to take place or minimize that?
So, just to add a little bit to what you're saying, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, but I can tell you that if we have steps, that doesn't mean someone's going to come in at step one, ever. I mean, right now, when people are hired in the city, they are rarely paid at step one, and that would be the case here as well, I'm sure. So we're back to it being the judgment of the administration to determine whether or not they just immediately come in at step three.
Yeah.
If they do come in at step one, you know, keep in mind that that doesn't mean they're going to get step two in the next year. This is not a union contract where people are coming in and they're receiving their step increases annually based on the union contract and the way the table was set up. These are management positions, so these positions, historically, as you know, have been given the same percentage increase as the union, ASME Union in particular, has received, but the steps are not going to give this body any more control, if you will, over what they're going to be paid, because every single person that gets hired within the city can simply start at step three.
Right.
So what this is not, what steps are not going to allow us to do is to provide us the ability based on, maybe it's a promotion, and they're, based on what you're just describing, right? They're just not ready necessarily for the job, but we want to be able to train them and improve their skills. Then we would stop them at somewhere at the not to exceed. That's the whole point of the not to exceed. Maybe it's less than what step one would have been set at. We'll use the city administrator's job again. So we put steps in there for that particular job, and the first step is 140 or 150,000. Mr. McCoy was gracious to come to us for less than that. So would we not be able to pay him less than that? Would we have to pay him what step one was? So the not to exceed gives management the ability to really look at the person's skills, look at, maybe even in some instances, do a temporary appointment, look at what they can accomplish for the city, and be able to present in the budgetary fashion, obviously, if it's not a contract employee that has to come down to this council for approval, be able to basically set a salary on the not to exceed. I mean, if you wanted, we could put a floor in, but we're doing the same thing by doing the not to exceed. At least that has been the opinion of the administration going forward with these management positions. So I understand the steps, but.
Yeah, so I guess where we disagree, and, you know, I shouldn't have said city administrator because it's a contract position, so it doesn't really, you know, I was just looking at Mr. McCoy.
Right, but any position that's, right.
That's, you know, obviously, that's contract, so that's going to be negotiated. But if we're talking about, just because we have an individual who's here, you know, taking more of a discount because of the experience and things of that nature, and we get that, I think where we disagree is that if we do what I'm suggesting we do and we do it appropriately, right? So we identify, we remove Mr. McCoy from the position, and we talk about the position itself, and we look at a comparative analysis, and we do a legitimate job of truly getting a comparative salary associated with it, I don't think you run any scenarios where you should have somebody new coming in at a step two or a step three, because we've already valued, right? So if you're looking at other communities, you should be in target with what they're getting, right? So somebody to come in at step one should be a comparative salary for somebody in Westport, and actually should be higher than Westport, right? So, again, I know cities pay less for their positions. I don't understand why, there's more work, you know, when you look at it, but our competition is with towns, we know that, right? As soon as somebody gets experience and they get their certification, they're making the move, they're going to get paid more in a smaller community, and they're not going to have as much responsibility. Not saying that they're going to have the same amount of workload, the responsibility and the headache is just not going to be at the level that you would have for a municipality at 90,000 or a population of 100,000, right? That is just constantly go, 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 and you've got a lot different politics. So from my standpoint, as you look at these communities, and if there are communities, again, paying 185 for a town administrator, then I would tell you that the city of Far River should be paying way more than 185 for a city administrator who has more responsibilities. And once we make that determination as to what that is, then I think we have, you know, step one, step two, step three, step four, and I think you have that built in for the non-contract people to make those moves year over year. Now, to the point where, this is where it's incumbent on the administration, when the executive branch is making a determination as to how do we fill this position. The city council has valued that position between 185 and 200,000. Now you need to find the right fit, right? And each year, based on, you know, who you have for department heads and division managers and where the strengths are from that standpoint, your person's going to vary a little bit, but the position itself should be valued still at the same, and somebody coming into the position, so if you're trying to recruit somebody from a town, they should be coming in at step one and automatically seeing an increase, right? Because the assumption is you're coming into a city versus a town, you've got more responsibility, so that should be paying more than what a town would be paying. So as step one, if we do it properly, should be more valuable so that people are willing to come into that position at step one, and not having to start somebody with experience at step two or three, right? So, and I know it's a long process, and it's trying to get all these pay scales back to where we feel, and I know you folks have been trying to do that, I think we just, as a group and as a council, need to do a better job of that. And I think, from my standpoint, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, that's what I was looking for in terms of, you know, the step salaries and things like that, and just listening to some of the colleagues, you know, kind of crossing over to the executive side and not blur that, you know, that divide, that we're the legislative body and not getting into the executive body about who we're going to hire, when we're going to hire, and all this other stuff, but really focusing on the ordinances and how we get that accomplished to meet everybody's needs, the administration's needs and the legislative body's needs in terms of a check and balance, that's all. How are you all?
Anything? Counselor Dion?
Yeah, I think I come at, I see what seat one is saying, I agree with his logic, but I think I have even another perspective which, and I know that you made the statement that, you know, the mayor should, if he feels somebody is deserving, should be able to have a raise, and it should be somewhat discretionary. Am I correct in that statement? But I have a hard time with this, and I'm going to tell you a couple of reasons why. As soon as we say, yes, up two, it allows for all of these positions to jump to the not to exceed number. But you have some position, like I just highlighted four positions. The up twos, if you look at the budget book and what the salary is budgeted for, the up two on one position is $4,000 more, but then we have another position that it's $10,000 more. I have a hard time when we start hitting $10,000 increases, and I don't see that these not to exceeds are consistent. And I just, I'm just not comfortable with that, because then we also have the ability, if there's money in the salaries line item at any point in time, a stipend can also be given, because stipends haven't been eliminated either. So I just have a difficult time, and I, you know, I know you didn't like the terminology I used the last time, and it probably wasn't the best terminology, but I just, I have an issue with this. I just feel like, you know, it's just, so often you hear, well, you know, it's a nice person, they work hard. Well, a lot of people in this city are nice people and work hard. To me, that's not a reason for a $10,000 raise or a $6,000 raise, there has to be more to it.
So can I just stop you just for one second?
Sure.
If you don't mind. So that's a perfect example, right? So the not to exceeds, that person is not receiving a 10,000, and I don't know who you're speaking of, but that position is not, that person is not receiving a $10,000 raise. Going back to Counselor Kadeem's point, that's what that position is worth. That particular individual, whoever it is that we're discussing, is probably being paid less because they have come in at a lesser rate because they didn't have the experience or the education when they were hired in that position. So they were at the lower end of the not to exceed scale, so to speak. So they're not receiving a $10,000 raise, and quite frankly, neither is the person with the 4,000. These are not to exceeds for future budgets. These are not automatically, these people are all going to go to this not to exceed amount. They're not. That's the whole purpose of having.
It's not a recommended salary.
Right. It's the whole purpose of having a range within the ordinance to pay these individuals, and that's a very perfect example that I was trying to point out. The $10,000 position that you just presented is not.
Well, this could be interesting, because I don't know if you really know the particular one I'm looking at.
I don't.
I think you're thinking one that we discussed in the past, discussing the budgets.
I don't know which one you're speaking of, so.
All right.
It's all the better that I don't, but that's a perfect example.
Right. And I understand what you're saying, however. However, it 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 does open the door for the possibility.
So if we do the same thing and and I'll go back to using three steps. If we go do the same thing and we use three steps, there is nothing telling the administration in the step system that we can't hire them all at step three. There's no reason to start at step one, no requirement to start at step one. So you're making, the counselor in seat one is making the assumption if the table was set up correctly, and I'm not disagreeing because we can disagree on the methodology. But if the table was set up using comparisons in all other communities and we hired equal people for a particular position, the the concept would be you would start them at step one. But we all know that doesn't happen, right? People get started now, even with the unions, at step three, at step four. We're having a conversation now with the ASME union because the steps in one of the areas is significantly under what it needs to be. And while three steps need to be adjusted, but everyone hired right now is being hired at step three. Nobody's being hired at step one or step two in these union positions. So the same thing can happen here if we go to a step concept. There is nothing to say we have to hire everyone at step one or step two or step three. And there's nothing to say, quite frankly, if they're not doing their job and they're not, their reviews, their evaluations are not where their performance should be based on their department head or their division manager, then there's nothing to say. They automatically go to the next step. They may stay on step whatever, let's just say step one for five years and still get the one and a half if that's what we're giving to the other unions. They would still get the cost of living, one and a half that the ASME union's getting, but they wouldn't get on top of it the step to step two or the step to step three or four and five if we have a five-step concept.
And there lies another issue. So if you set a a a position at a not to exceed and the person reaches the not to exceed, then the very next year we're violating ordinance because the one and a half automatically puts them above the not to exceed.
So there's a section in the ordinance book that says that they would receive whatever the union receives or it should be in there. I believe it's the last section in the section fifty that indicates that all these positions that have been noted before increases include whatever the ASME union receives. So you are correct because the last time this was corrected was two thousand seventeen. It had been years, hadn't been corrected for years. In two thousand seventeen, Council President and Mrs. Coelho worked on it for for weeks and they readjusted all these not to exceeds at that particular point on seven one seventeen. Seven one eighteen and seven one nineteen and seven one twenty did not include the one and a half in the ordinance book, but a table has been maintained in personnel to show what that not to exceed would be if we happened to hire an individual that needs to be at the top, you know? We previously hired, I believe, the city engineer that was at the top of the steps, at that or at the top of the not to exceed at that particular point.
So traditionally, the ordinance has always been adjusted to meet the salary as opposed to the salary being adjusted to meet the ordinance.
The the ordinance has been, the ordinance in in section three oh one has been adjusted annually by the increase in the ASME contract. And this goes back for years and years and years, even prior to Counselor Kadim being the city administrator. It was the only way to give each of these individuals that are listed here a fair increase without increasing them based haphazardly on, you know, we like this person more, so they're going to get five percent, but this person's only going to get one percent, but the ASME union gets one and a half percent. Everyone gets the exact same increase.
So let's say, so is it fair to say that basically you look at this on a at a three-year level?
Correct.
And at three percent, Counselor, to add some more cushion in there so you're not up against the ceiling. For that scenario that was just described with the one and a half, you know, you're not up against the ceiling as as quickly.
It's three years plus three percent.
Yeah.
And over those three years, they're getting four and a half percent. They put one and a half percent every year. It's four and a half percent.
Well, it's been one and a half. We don't know what next year will bring.
So that's what I'm basing the conversation on.
Right, so if it's been right, that's correct.
How it's always been.
Right.
So to me theoretically, your not to exceed should be whatever their salary is now, they're one and a half, one and a half, one and a half, so that it doesn't exceed ordinance.
But we don't know that one and a half will be the the agreement next year for the ASME union. It may be two, it may be two and a half, it may be two and a quarter, it may be one. So it will be whatever, it could be three. So it will be whatever the AS, whatever is agreed to in negotiations for the ASME union.
So I agree that there are non-union people who definitely need, deserve raises. I have no problem with that. I just find it interesting that non-union people get union, in a sense, get union raises. Like whatever the union gets, they receive. Maybe sometimes the union bargains for one and a half and maybe the other, the city employee should get two and a half.
But well, Counselor, the only thing though, in that scenario, if I may, sorry.
No, please.
If I may, now you're talking about, now you're really talking about opening up a can of worms from the political side, which is where we kind of started this particular conversation. I mean, then you could really have somebody, you know, maybe getting a seven. I think I think mirroring what the what the bargaining units are doing is just is a way to do it fairly across the board. You know, I think otherwise, if you're doing, you know, all of these folks individually, I mean, there's much more room for potential, whatever you want, political favor, nepotism, whatever. If that's, you know, again, if that in fact is a is a major concern. I mean, I don't see that going on right now, but you see where I'm coming from. I mean, I could get seven and Counselor Kadim could get eleven and and someone else could just get the one and a half that the bargaining unit got. I mean, I think you would want to protect that. But can I can I can I just ask a foundational question here? I mean, typically, you know, again, the step increase is typically kicking via the date, right? I mean, I mean, that's how they worked at 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 housing. So I mean, you have someone who literally just by, I I I don't mean that this be disparaging to anybody, but by hanging on to their job is automatically getting a raise or a step increase. So and I don't know if you necessarily want to go back to to that type of a system either. And by the way, since we were talking about my jobs, truth be told, I started at step two as a purchasing agent. And I'm a, I'm assuming it was because of possessing the JD, the law degree, but I didn't start at step one. So it seems like we have varying issues here. I mean, we're not competitive in a lot of our salaries, whether it's even towns or like cities. But again, this is also a, right, right now, I think we also get the problem of, again, cleaning up our ordinances because so many people have flown by, you know, what's required at the ordinances. And great that there's another section of the ordinance that kind of allows for that, you know, for that adjustment strictly strictly related to what the units got, you know? But I'm sorry, Counsel, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay. And I guess and I guess my answer to that would be, though a lot of what you say is true, these people also don't get the other perks that come for accepting a one and a half. They don't get the unlimited sick time. They don't get other things that they'll say, okay, we'll take the one and a half because we're gaining here, here, and here. I mean, but...
Management, not to interrupt you, management gets pretty much the same benefits as the ASME union. The unlimited sick is strictly fire and police, I believe. So just so you know, these positions would all get the same benefits that are negotiated, the same holidays, the same benefits that are that are negotiated for the ASME union.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Anything further?
Just in in terms of, I guess, the steps, right? So that's just, I mean, it's always been a pet peeve of mine anyways. From from my standpoint is is that, you know, when we negotiate contracts to start anybody above like a step two or step three, like that to me is an administration thing. And I recognize you've done it in the Housing Authority, but, you know, it, when we when we negotiate contracts and we have steps, step one, step two, step three, step four, it's years of service. So it's like you come in, your first year of service with the city is step one. That's where you should be at. That's how you get your vacation time, that's how you get your sick time. So that's how your your pay should be based on. So if you're, if what we're what we're seeing is exactly what we're seeing now is is that, you know, we're not competitive. So in order to attract people, we're putting people into step three and step four. So so the system's broke. So we, I think, again, we need to, we need to fix the system, right? So if step one isn't working, then putting everybody on step three doesn't make sense. You need to fix step one or make step three your new step one and and adjust it from there so that everybody coming in starts at step one. Because if 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 everybody's starting at step two, three, four, five, then what's the point of having steps, right? So it should be continuity, there should be reasoning, you know? Human resources shouldn't be just arbitrarily making, because if somebody comes in and, you know, at the end of the day, it's it's who argues the loudest, okay? I should be getting this, I was getting that, and okay, we'll put you in step three. Now, if I've got more qualifications than the person that just came in step three, but I'm not the individual who's going to advocate for myself, I'm going to get stuck at step one, right? So to to have that continuity, to have that equity, which is is part of what we were discussing to, the equitability portion of this is that we need to fix it. And I think that's how you fix it, is the steps. And, you know, and you leave, you leave the arbitrary decision-making process that we have deemed to be political out of it, right? So we say, okay, this is this is where we feel, you know, X, Y, and Z position is worth. Here are the steps and then we continue to do that moving forward. That's just, that's my take and that's, I guess that's where I was trying to to get to. And and I think it creates a more equitable, competitive balance, balance and advantage for us. Because again, it's from our standpoint, from the legislative body, we don't care about the people, right? We shouldn't care about the people. We shouldn't be putting the names associated with the position, right? I want to clarify, I'm like, we care about the people. I'm saying in this discussion, we we shouldn't be taking names in dealing with people, specific people. Excuse me. We should be looking at the job title. What is the job title valued at? And that's, I think, is what we are supposed to be dealing with. It's not about whether it's Tim McCoy or Sean Kadim or Pam or Michelle that that's going to be in this position. And based on who's in this this position, how much money are they really going to get, right? It's the it's the position itself. I mean, that's that's how we need to, I I think we need to operate and and maybe it's just...
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but you can hire somebody and they may have the same degrees, but one person may be coming from another community and have ten years or five years worth of experience being, I don't know, the city clerk. And then you have somebody else that works in the city clerk's department who's worked there for twenty years and wants the opportunity for that position as well. And now you're assessing somebody with city clerk experience against somebody without and you're thinking to yourself, do you promote from within and give somebody the opportunity to grow? Or do you bring somebody in with ten years' experience? And if you bring somebody in with ten years' experience, I can pretty guarantee you that they're not going to start at step one. So we're not, we're back to the same discussion about somebody with experience in a management, meaning the administration, being able to assess that resume and determine where they should start them at. And it may even be between steps.
But if you value somebody internally who you feel intrinsically can fill that position, they should be paid at step one. Just because they're coming in, you see something, as a manager, I've done it before. You see somebody, because the problem we have, right, is is that we take somebody who has intrinsic managerial experience that we see that we can't train. You get, there are only certain characteristics that you can train, right? I can, I, there are a handful of department heads that I have in the town of Seacock and there are a couple that I know, it doesn't matter which department I put them in, they could have zero experience. But their characteristics is is that if I drop them in this department, within six months, I will have a well-run department because they will do whatever it takes to make sure that they understand, they will research. That is something you can't teach, right? So if you're going to take that person and put them in a position, they should be paid because the the job description, the job responsibility hasn't changed whether I'm a ten-year person or somebody coming in. So what I'm saying is, is if we've correctly established our steps at step one and somebody who has ten years, ten years of experience is going to come in from another community, they're going to come in because they feel that the salary base at step one is worth the move. Because, I mean, there there are a number of town administrator jobs that are opening up, you know, and I get them sent. You know, I I won't, listen, if I look at one forty-five, not entertaining it, right? So I know right off the bat that they're not going to be competitive, so I'm not applying to that. So when they come back and they say one eighty-five, one ninety-five, two hundred thousand is is the starting point of it, then okay, then we're talking, right? Because I know what my education, I know my experience and I know the value that I bring to the organization i- is the value that I've put on it is in that category. Now, whether or not the the community sees it that way, that's one thing. But those individuals are not going to apply to us if if our step one, or shouldn't apply to us, if our step one isn't competitive, which is where I'm I'm saying. We need to figure out what's competitive. And once we figure that out, regardless of who it is, if we feel we've got the right person for that position, then it should start in step one. And then we know what the increase is going to be is between the lane shift, whether it's three percent between lane shifts plus a percentage increase, whatever the case may be, based on what what the increases on the unions get, that's what we should be doing. You know, a three percent, three percent, three percent, three percent between lanes, similar to the union contract. So we have, we have eliminated the politics associated with an individual coming in. And so if we do it right, we've, we've gotten to the point where, okay, we say we want qualified. If you want a person who has ten years' experience or fifteen years' experience, if that's what you're really looking for, then we need to pay it, right? So step one needs to be able to pay somebody that has the experience at at fifteen years. We can't say that step one's going to be, you know, is going to pay somebody who has five years' experience and we're hoping that we're going to get somebody with ten years' experience. So I I think that's what I talk about when we need to, when we value a position, what is it that we're valuing? What are we looking for, right? Are we looking for ten years' experience with this X, Y, and Z? Okay, that is worth, on the market, when we look at it, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So step one should be a hundred and eighty-five thousand, no questions asked. And then it's up to the administration to figure out who they've, they they want to hire. Now, from my standpoint, we can have a say, okay, we don't like this person or that person. But from from a legislative body, we shouldn't have a say as to who's getting hired because we're not the executive branch, we're not the appointing authority. We've done our job at that point, right? We've established, this is what we see, we want for this position, this experience, and it starts at step one and this is what we're willing to pay for. And then we go from there so that we don't have anybody at step two or step three. I I just think that that should be working for all our positions, whether it be collective bargaining agreements, individual contracts, employees at will. Like that's just, that's just my philosophical take on on the situation. And I think we're just, we are just so behind the eight ball and it's hard to get us back to where we need to be. So but when we get to to your point, now we're paying, like you've already seen, and I don't know what position you're talking about, but you see in the budget that we've lowballed a salary position because we gave somebody an opportunity. So once they get the experience and now they want to get back to where a competitive rate is and then you see a twenty thousand dollar increase, everybody's up in arms and saying, well, why are we paying somebody twenty thousand dollars? Well, because we started them at twenty thousand dollars less, but nobody has the historical mindset to say that, right? So now it's like it's a catch twenty-two. So now we just, we really just screwed the individual who was who was really willing to take the opportunity and the risk and and the administration has has given them the opportunity and 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 invested in them. And now when it's time to get them up to where they should be, that they're not going to get it or there's going to be this big argument saying, okay, now you just gave somebody a twenty thousand dollar raise when when we've got a clerical person who's only getting a one percent raise, right? So then we've got that disparity, the inequitable, inequity there and then we're just, we're fighting that from from a, just from a perception standpoint. So that's why I think if we we eliminate all of that, if we truly analyze all oppositions, we understand what the jobs are, the job and responsibilities are with them and we and we put a value on it. I think that's what we need to do. I was ready to make a motion, but Counsel Pera is here now, so I just, I don't want to make my motion because it might kill debate, so.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Ms. Sadi, I just have a question.
Sure.
How long would it take for you to research what competitive starting salaries would be if you wanted to move in the direction of staffs?
A good year.
A year to come up with competitive?
Definitely. And Counsel Kadim is shaking his head yes. It would take quite some time. And what that would probably mean is there would be a significant amount of raises that would have to be given if they were given to step one. Because Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon, just pointed out one in particular that she saw. So there would be a number of people that would have to get raises to go to what Counselor Kadim is determining to be what is equitable in other communities as step one. Because I will tell you that I can probably tell you, looking at these positions pretty quickly and just our system city in New Beffet, all of them are being paid more.
More in the back?
Yeah.
And just a point of information, just along the lines too. So so the the other thing that's challenging is is that you've got job descriptions and titles that are slightly different and then responsibilities are different.
So the comparison is going to be a lot of work.
You might find some roles and jobs that we have a title here and it's not even the same title there. Then you're going to really do some heavy-duty digging to get to, okay, who is, you know, what are you calling your... to, okay, who is, you know, what are you calling your facilities person, for lack of a, lack of a...
And then the other concern I would have is, who's going to decide which comps are comps that we should use? New Beffet, Brockton, Springfield? Now are we saying we're in the Boston area, so they should be getting paid more?
South of $495.
Right? So now we're back to, we bring you comps, and did we use the right communities?
Unless you're negotiating my contracts. North of $495, if you're negotiating my contracts.
So it would be a very big undertaking.
I'll say something.
Counsel Pereira?
I kind of agree that we don't pay people enough. I mean, prime example, you know, the past two engineers we've had have left here. I mean, I would leave, too, if I was getting $20,000 more 15 minutes away from home versus driving and in a smaller community. And I really think we need to look at that. How long did we take, you know, to get a city administrator? I mean, I'm glad we have Tim now, but we've had city administrators, and the money that you are willing to pay, you're not going to get the cream of the crop. And if we're going to look at different departments that need to have certain licenses, well, if people have certain licenses, they should be paid more. And if you pay somebody a good salary, you're going to get somebody good, and they're, in the end, going to save you money. But I have to agree with Counsel Kadim. When you say in Fall River that you're advancing somebody's salary, people don't understand that, you know, we all want our kids to go to college, we all want our kids to get good jobs, we want that, we want them to be educated and trained, et cetera, for them to make a decent pay. But for some reason, we have a hard time justifying how certain individuals in City Hall make a certain amount of money. I mean, just in, and it's across the board, it's not just the administration part, but when you look at the police department needing an electrician and needing a mechanic, and the pay is $17.50 an hour, you're not going to get a decent mechanic for $16.50 an hour, you're not going to get somebody with experience that could save you a lot of money on your vehicles. You know?
I sat with Mr. Furlan today, he's down to one operator at the water treatment plant.
Well, at the water treatment plant, he has three positions on the mass water website. So he's going to hire people. But when he hires those people, those people should come in with the proper licenses that they should have, not hire somebody that doesn't have that license. But to get somebody with the proper licenses, you have to pay.
Yeah.
You have to pay.
And you're probably $8 an hour less than other areas, or private sector, or, you know, whatever. You know, just not get better. May I counsel?
Sure.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No.
Again, I just, I see this as a, and I respect everybody's opinion here, this has actually been a refreshing conversation. The, you know, it appears that we were in violation of our ordinances with several salaries now, and several individuals. My only suggestion was, again, looking at this as a twofold problem, is at least, you know, correcting what we have wrong here legislatively, and diving into what Counselor Kadim is saying, and really giving it a hard look, and move everything to where it's going to be for the city to be competitive, to hire what we used to say, you know, the best and the brightest, when we were on the school committee together. I just don't, I don't know if we can resolve this problem in front of us, which I would like to see corrected, if it's the will of our counselors, if we can do that in the time span where you could, where we could get some sort of a comparative analysis and really do hard steps that fit. You know? And again, I am a little bit concerned, well, again, there's two things I'm concerned about. Again, is someone going to be expecting a step increase on either the negotiated date, the date of their hire, or that arbitrary date of April 1, or wherever it may be? And also, we might be, and I mean, without naming individuals, and if I misspeak, correct me, feel free, but we might have folks who have been here so long and have done a good job, and they've just increased over time, but it's very, very possible that their replacement in the, and this isn't, this isn't, it's not for many folks, but their replacement might not be where they are right now. So in other words, creating the step structure, we may already have someone who's blowing that out of the water, the same way we're currently blowing the ordinances out of the water. You know, I get, one person is, you know, coming to mind, but you may say the starting salary for that position, minus this 30-year employee, might not be anywhere near where they are now.
Right.
And so that's also throwing off your concept of putting in four or five steps, or whatever. You could have, and there may be more than one, but I do have someone who's coming to mind, who's a great employee, by the way, you know? But they haven't, I'm not saying, I don't believe that they were given any raise over the course of their career, because they were either somebody's favorite, or something political. That's not the case at all. It's just they've been here for a long time, and this is where their salary's gone for their great years of service, you know?
Well, we had that conversation, you probably weren't at the first meeting, whether we got to this, but with the deputy police chiefs. And we've got deputy police chiefs, they were being paid initially, based on the superiors contract, that they're getting paid, one of them is just about the same amount...
As the chief.
As the chief. Which makes no sense. But he's been here more than 25 years, or 28 years, whatever, 28, I guess the ordinance really was. We scratched those, because the chief was going to go to contract with those, but more than...
And again, I'm sure there was nothing nefarious with that position, but it's just, again, where it's ended up. So you're going to have people in immediate violation, I would think, kind of similar to the ordinances, with some of these instances, we're throwing steps to these positions, you know? And I know we don't want to throw the steps in haphazardly, I'm not suggesting that you're saying that, but I guess what I was hoping here is, if it's, again, the pleasure of the counselors, if we can kind of separate the issues and at least clean up what we have here, the legislative errors, you know? The ordinance, you know, the ordinance violation, so to speak. Not that it's the intent of anyone to intentionally violate them, but we have folks who, again, have exceeded these ordinances.
Counsel Pereira, you still have...
No, I agree. We have, we're not in compliance right now, I understand that. It shouldn't have happened, this should have came to the council before anybody got anything, but at this point, you're out of compliance, so we need to look at that. But I think what Counsel Kadim mentioned about getting proper pay for positions is something that we really need to, we need to address. And, you know, they hook us up a lot with Providence, too. I mean, they'll get an average of, you know, just the surrounding area.
And we can certainly do that, and it will take some time, but we should also look at, while we're doing that, financially, what that is going to mean.
Right.
Because we only have so much in terms of resources, and, you know, without, and you know, we talk about this on a regular basis, but without another stream of revenue within the city, we struggle, as you know, and actually, Mr. McCoy mentioned this to me just today, actually, that how bare bones all these departments are. Because staff has left, we've tried to make the budget without replacing them, and we're down to bare bones in a lot of departments for that reason.
We've never survived since the 9C cuts. We've never gotten back to where we were.
Right.
And it's showing. You know, we have people that call with issues of, you know, something as much as, I need this tree cut in front of my house, it's dead, and not have the manpower, there's one person on the tree commission, they're not going to go out by themselves. So you've got to wait, pull somebody from something else that they were going to do, because there's just, the manpower's not there.
Right. But all that costs money. So now we have to take a look at, you know, if we're going to set this salaries table up so that it is competitive, what's that going to cost us?
That's a good point. With that, I yield.
Counsel Kadim?
Thank you. So, you know, Mr. McCoy, I'd agree with the statement that you made. Unfortunately, the problem is, is that, you know, this council has asked for the step increases, and the administration just told us that they're not going to, number one, this is the second meeting, they haven't submitted it, number two, said that they don't want to go down that road, so, you know, I support your statement, right? I support a long-term, you know, one-year review of all our salaries, and I understand that. But, you know, you've got a legislative body that's requesting something, and the administration, and this isn't the first time, this is my frustration. We request things, we're trying to work with the administration, and when they don't feel like doing it, it's just a no. Right? So at what point do we, do we as counselors stop trying to work with the administration and start saying, no, now we're just going to be obstructionist until we get what we want? Right? You talk about, you know, the police department, nothing nefarious from the police department, I beg to differ. We had a chief of police who had some type of violations, we didn't want to keep him as a chief and renew his contract, but we put him back as a deputy, and so we wonder why he's making as much money as the chief, because we have an administration that put that person there. We create our problems, we don't fix our problems. Right? So that's just, that's just my take. So if everybody's done, I want, I'll make a motion, grant to leave to withdraw, because the council has requested the steps, and we just haven't received what our request was. So with that, that's my motion.
Motion, leave to withdraw, made by Counsel Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Deon. I'm thirty, roll call.
If you wish. Your choice.
Roll call.
Roll call on granting the proposed ordinance leave to withdraw, Counsel Kadim?
Yes.
Counsel Deon?
Yes.
Counsel Lee? Counsel Pereira?
No.
Chair of Liberty, the vote?
No.
Two yays, two nays. Does not move.
Is there another motion?
Motion to refer to full council with no determination. Get the rest of the councils to vote on it.
You want to refer without recommendation, Counsel?
Yeah.
Motion to refer for action without recommendation made by Counsel Pereira, is there a second?
Roll call.
Is there a second? Need a second first. Is there another motion?
Would it be without a recommendation or the negative recommendation?
Her motion was without a recommendation?
Without, it was a two-two vote, so there is no recommendation from the committee. So if it goes to the council, then everybody will vote on it there.
On a tie, there's no fail or pass?
Motion fails on the tie. Mrs. Sadi, what happens to the budget if this is not passed before the budget?
Will be out of compliance with ordinance.
So for you, like, how do we as a council allow that?
We don't.
No, we do. It's happening. I mean, that's my point, that's just my frustration. It's just, so we have ordinances, we all take an oath to uphold the ordinances, and they're knowingly being violated.
Then we wouldn't pass the budget, Counsel.
Can I, so, they would just be adding another one and a half, making an assumption that the ASME union would pass, or would negotiate a one and a half. There are a couple of people, if you looked at the very first list, there are a few people that are over by $100 and $200. I can certainly go back and look at that to make sure that that is in fact correct. When we first got the current salaries, I was using the budget and not necessarily using the actual payroll, so I can go back and certainly make sure nobody's over, but at this particular point, I don't think anyone is over the 2017 ordinance, if you take into consideration the negotiated one and a half, and one and a half, and one and a half. In this particular three-year cycle, that's what the salary increases were for the ASME union. The same thing would be true going forward into the next year. Whatever the ASME union would receive would be what they will receive. In the 2022 budget, because that contract is currently being negotiated, no one, if you look at all the names within that budget, no one is receiving an increase. So in the 2022 budget, the salaries are exactly as they were in the '21 budget.
I'm not...
Or exactly what they're making today.
I'm the Vice President.
Because we're waiting on the negotiations of the ASME contract.
I feel like the chart that was given to us prior, I feel like they were out of ordinance, weren't they, to have that, Counsel?
I don't have it, wasn't it?
I think I have it under my desk.
I will just share with you what I've got. So this person is making this, that's what ordinance would be. This person, that didn't get passed till '19, so it would be this, that's what they're making. So if you down, see this one right here? It's about $500 or $400, I don't know why. So there are a few, but not many.
Counsel Kadim, you still have a floor?
No, I was just, I mean, my point I was just making in terms of the ordinance, and then your response that we won't pass the budget, but I think at the end of the day, we all know that folks get weak-kneed, we're going to be told that it's a 112 budget. So a budget's going to be passed. Like, I'm not naive...
So Counsel, do you give this leave to withdraw?
I'm not naive to think that we're all going to sit here and say, you know what, we're not going to pass a budget because the administration isn't upholding the ordinances. All the roadwork, I mean, we've, one of my frustrations, I mean, has anybody driven up the north end and seen all the patchwork that's being done by the gas company? Supposed to be infrared. There's no infrared. None, zero. That's in our ordinance, not being followed. I can go on and on and on and on. So to sit here, we made a request, this is, I mean, we're an ordinance committee, this ordinance committee made a request, and we're fine with the administration coming back down, and you can shake your head, I mean, this is exactly what's happening. We requested the administration to come down with a salary table, and they said no.
So here's my question, Counsel.
They said no, hold on, I got the floor. They said no, not once, not twice, this is the third time we're having the conversation, we haven't gotten what we requested, and so we're just going to recommend it to full council. So what's the point of having this ordinance committee? I don't quite understand it. The job of this ordinance committee is to make sure that we do and vet everything. So if we're not getting the information that we've requested, why should we send it back to full council? It should be buried in ordinance, that's the only way the administration's going to stop paying attention to us, if you really want to have a tangible difference. So we can continue to say that, okay, we won't pass the budget. I will listen to that, but I guarantee you, by June 30th, there will be a budget passed. I'll put money on it. Figure out, I don't know how much money you want to put on the table, I will bet you, June 30th, there will be a budget passed, ordinances will still be violated, and we will all be complaining, and that's all we'll be doing, is complaining. So my motion was grant to leave to withdraw, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support anything but a grant to leave to withdraw.
So my question to you is, if you agree with Mrs. Sadi that it would take a year to put these steps together, how are they going to send them down to us in a matter of weeks?
Oh, that's simple, then we could say, the administration could come down and say, we agree with you, we will work with you, give us a year, and then I would agree to that. But we haven't gotten that. We heard point-blank from Mr. Sadi that the administration is saying, no, they do not want steps. So I understand what Mr. McCoy is saying, but what Mr. McCoy is saying and what the administration is saying are two different things. I can agree with what Mr. McCoy said. I can agree to get us to where we need to be, as long as we can get a commitment from the administration to come back and have a true salary, comparative salary analysis, that's going to be for all of this, and quite frankly, I think it's going to be a little bit more than a year.
So you're just looking for a cut-in for the steps, not the steps?
But I want some guarantees, though. I literally want guarantees, not just this, you know, commitments that we're always talking about and we never see. You know, I don't want another trash issue where we're two years out and we're still talking about the same issue. That's all.
Counsel, are you looking, I'm sorry, again, I apologize. Counsel, are you looking for a guaranteed, you know, response to, you know, a guaranteed analysis, or a guarantee that it's going to be implemented? Because again, if we have the time to do this, you know, I mean, you know, maybe it is something we can get done, again, if we move forward here and clean up what we have Again, if we move forward here and clean up what we have in front of us.
So what I'm looking for...
You know, because I've... Go ahead.
So I guess what I'm looking for might be a little bit different than what the committee's looking for. But the committee took a vote to see a step scale. We took that vote. We sent it back to the administration. We have not seen at any point the last three months.
Three months, I understand.
That we haven't seen any of it. We've been told, no, they're not going to do it. So we tabled it at the last meeting. We lifted it from the table. We were told again, it's not going to come in. So, I mean, there's just no appetite from the administration to have, which is fine. All I'm saying is if there's no appetite from the administration and the legislative body is saying that that's what we want to see, then I think we're at a crossroads, right? I think if we're doing our due diligence and vetting and saying that we need to correct a problem, and I agree with Ms. Sahadi, I'm not going to suggest that this isn't going to cost money and we need to... And when we make these analysis, maybe it's a multi-year, you know, taking us multi-years to get to the point where we need to be. But at some point, we need to stop making some changes. That's all. And I say, we keep talking about it, but at this point, this is the opportunity. This is the forum that we can make the changes. We've made a request, we haven't seen it. So from my take, my understanding is that the administration doesn't want to see steps, but that we've requested it. So we're the legislative body that has asked to see this. We've reviewed it and I don't know what to tell you.
So can I suggest at this particular point that it go to full council for the entire council to vet whether or not the steps are going to be a requirement? Because that's what you're saying. You're not going to vote this out of this committee unless we come with steps.
Listen, that's up to the other council members. I'm voting no on that.
I understand that. I know how you feel, but...
My vote is, I'm putting my foot down. And call me an obstructionist, call me whatever you want. But until I get some of the things that we've requested, legitimately requested as counselors, whether it's in ordinance committee, public safety, full council, whatever the case may be, until I start seeing that there's a true partnership, then my votes are just going to be no across the board. I mean, I've done it before, I'll continue to do it. But we're there. I mean, it's just, I don't feel like that the partnership's there. That's all.
Well, and Councilor, all I can suggest is if you give us the time for the analysis, but again, there's no way to put something like that together unless it's for next year's budget hearings.
Which I said, I'm fine with that. But I haven't, I didn't hear that that's what was... It wasn't presented, hey, if you give us, it's going to take us some time, we need to, at least a year to put this together? That's not what was said. What was said was, we do not agree with the steps. So right off the bat, the concept that we're talking about and that I think we're all in general agreement with has been denied by the administration.
Madam Clerk, was it April 6th that we asked for the steps? Was it the April 6th meeting?
It was April 6th or April 20th. Hold on.
Madam Chair, while the clerk is looking for that, because I had another meeting before this one, who said that the mayor did not want to go with steps?
Well...
Did the mayor tell anybody that?
When we first discussed it with the mayor, the idea and the idea of the not to exceed was so that we could not have to pigeonhole someone into a particular step. So there's nothing stopping us from hiring everybody at step three or step four, if there's four steps or five steps. So you've kind of eliminated the whole step concept to begin with. In addition, that is then going to require us to hire somebody at step one. And the discussion was, there are times when we try to bring somebody in. You know, we've been trying to hire a number of positions and we have a difficult time. There are some positions where we have brought somebody in internally that needed some training, needed some time, needed to grow on the job. They, and you can see from the table right here, even the very first item on the table, the ordinance was passed at $60,000 and the current salary is 55 because, in this particular case, it's a police, the chief didn't believe. At the time, the $60,000 was warranted while this person learned and did the job. So by utilizing the step concept, you are now saying to us, no matter who we hire, they've got to get paid at least step one.
Okay. But now, let's try my question.
Okay.
Who did the mayor tell that he would not go with steps? Did he say that? Did you explain to him, as Council Kadeem just said, that to come with steps, it could be something, because it is going to be a money issue for us, but that it could be something that spread over a couple of years? Was he informed of that? Or was he told, this isn't a way to go because this is what I see, it's going to cost a lot? I just want to know, who did the mayor say, I will not entertain steps?
Conversation was initially with Mrs. Coelho and myself, because the city had steps. And back when Council President worked diligently on this project with Council President and Mrs. Coelho, they took out all the steps. So the steps were there up to 2015 or '16 on most of these positions. And they were all removed by the council at the time to go to the not to exceed, to give the flexibility to the administration to hire somebody based on their resume and their years of experience.
So that was done by you and Mrs. Coelho in discussion?
With the mayor.
With Mayor Coogan?
That's correct.
Okay. And did he say, I don't want the steps?
Well, he agreed that this method that we're currently using makes the most amount of sense. I don't know if he specifically said, I don't want steps. I think he agreed that the methodology that we're currently using makes the most amount of sense because it gives him the most amount, and the department heads that are hiring somebody, the most amount of flexibility in order to hire somebody at what is determined to be what they're worth.
The only reason I'd be concerned with the steps is that if you're going to put everybody in step, it's going to be a big money issue immediately.
Well, it also isn't feasible for this budget season.
However, like Council Kadeem said, if you implemented this over time, then it works. So that's what I'm saying. I've been...
But Council, the analysis and to get a solid first step, which again...
Going to take a while.
Is great, but it's going to take a while. So it's also something that's just not feasible for this budget season.
Right.
You know, to have those folks come in and be truly paid where they deserve to be paid, you're going to go to like cities and towns. And it was mentioned, I believe, before you came in. But as you know, the job titles don't necessarily mirror from city and town to town. So you're looking at the responsibilities of the individual. We may use titles that are not even applicable in a like city or town.
It would also mean that depending on how we determine step one to be, some individuals could get significant raises.
Right.
Right away. Because step one would be based on the comps in all these other communities, which as we know now are higher than most people get paid here in the city of Fall River. And so immediately, there would be a significant amount of raises, even if we're talking about just step one.
So you, as finance person in the city, you wouldn't think that going to step right now altogether in a bunch would be something that you would feel we should do because of the amount of money it's going to cost us and the budget?
It's going to be costly. That's correct.
Okay. So, I mean, the mayor asks you because you do the finances of the city and this is what you say. So I can understand why he would say, hey, look, if this is working, we'll keep this. However, hearing Council Kadeem say, you can stretch this over a few years, maybe his position would be different on that matter. So sometimes I think, we think it's lack of communication, but sometimes I think it's the information that we're sharing back and forth. Like, let's all be honest, we don't want, boom, we're just going to do step raises right now, come in, give us a chart. Because there's not going to be money in the budget. There's not. I mean, maybe this year we had a little bit of money because, you know, we got millions of dollars coming from different avenues, but that isn't even going to salaries. But I just think, you know, if we could get a commitment that, yes, this is something that we're going to be looking into. And I would go with a couple of years, you know, to get it done. So if it's this year we do so much, next year we do so much, then I think it's workable and everybody's on the same page. Because we are all on the same page about the fact that we can't retain workers because we're not paying them what they should be paid. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
I just want to remind the committee, this is the letter that was sent to the mayor on April 22nd. It was tabled at our April 20th meeting. At a meeting of the City Council Committee on Ordinance and Legislation held on Tuesday, April 20th, discussion was held regarding a proposed salary schedule ordinance for Section 50-301 and 50-302 of the Code of Fall River, a copy of which is enclosed. On a motion made and seconded, it was unanimously voted to request that the proposed ordinance be amended by adding four steps for all positions listed in Section 50-301 and establish a policy whereby all assistant department head salaries are a set percentage of the department head salary. The Committee on Ordinance and Legislation requested that this matter be tabled until such time that these amendments are received by the committee for further discussion. Should you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me office. You yield, Council Pereira?
I yield. Thank you.
So I don't think anyone is expecting that this would be done, knowing that it's a year out. And quite honestly, we don't even know what it looks like. Without having it in front of us, we can, you know, guess what other cities and towns are doing. But we don't have a full comparison in front of us. So we're just looking for a commitment that this would happen. If that's the will of the committee.
Well, perhaps we send another letter to say, this is what we want and it can be over a period of time. We can stretch it out. And if we get a commitment that that is going to be done, then, you know, then we can pass the ones that we have before us. Because right now, we are out of compliance with that. Either way, you have to be in compliance. I hate to say it, but...
Are you making a motion to send another communication to the mayor?
Yeah, but explain that it can be done over time. And I think Mrs. Sahadi and Mr. McCoy got the feelings of the members that are here to be able to, you know, inform the mayor what some of the concerns was of this body. And that we clearly understand it's not something that you're going to do right away. It's not a big money grab, boom. It's not going to affect the body. You're just going to weave it in and see. And the next meeting you have, put it on and see if he agrees to that. Then we can move this.
So there's a motion on the table to send another communication to Mayor Coogan.
Second.
Paid by Council Pereira. So if you have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to table the item before us?
Motion.
Motion to table by Council Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by Council Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Item six of the proposed ordinance needs to be lifted from the table, amending structures on or over public ways. It was tabled February 4th, 2021. Corporation Council, you want to join us?
Number six.
Mr. McCoy, you want to stay?
Sure.
Attorney Ramsey?
This is a proposed ordinance that I prepared. If you recall, the main issue was for outdoor dining, ordinance 66 S 258, kind of dealt with outdoor dining and allings and anything over public way in one category. So I know this council was intending to expedite the process for restaurants to have tables and chairs outside on sidewalks. What we found, I guess, is the limiting factor, at least the most time-consuming factor, was getting city council approval just because the meetings are only approximately every two weeks. Glenn Hathaway, Building Inspector, has kind of coordinated the response from police, fire, licensing, traffic, everybody else. But sometimes it took a little more time to get before the city council. So what this proposed revision is designed to do is, with the authority, the city council is giving up their authority or allowing the administration, if a restaurant gets approval from all the other bodies, that they would have the city council automatic approval. Now, of course, this proposed ordinance still gives the city council the ability to revoke that power. So if you see something that the administration granted and you're not happy with it, it's still your power. It just gives the administration the power to go forward and grant the license to put a table and chair on a sidewalk. So that's what it is. I know that we had some discussion about Section D. I'd be happy to get into it if you'd like to. Or we can just, I'll let you guys take the lead on that.
Council Pereira?
I like that the licensing period is a time allowed by the permitting authority. Because I thought we were going to allow outdoor dining from May 1st to November 1st, weather permitting. But, you know, that's not in here. And I think just allowing it as permitting, maybe if we have really good weather and you can have it, you know, beyond November 1st, maybe to November 30th, that they can just do that. That would be fine, rather than have such a cutoff.
To be clear, I don't believe there's any intent to change the one-year permit process.
Right.
But it does allow police, fire, anybody else, the ability to have a longer or shorter duration if they need to. But I don't think there's any plans whatsoever to change. It'll be an annual process.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Is there anything further?
So can I...
Council Kadeem?
So where does it, does it say that as long as, I guess, I'm trying to find where it would say that as long as it has all the prior approvals from the departments, it doesn't require city council approval?
It's going to be in Section B. Because first of all, in Section A, it says that the permit is required by city council. And that would be for allings and anything on a public way. B is the exception to A. It says that...
Oh, okay.
Provided the restaurant applicant has obtained all city-required approvals, including but not limited to the approval of the city's building inspector. Right now, Mr. Hathaway has really done all the legwork for the restaurants. So the restaurant doesn't have to go to police and fire or anything else. Right now, they're just going to the building inspector who's coordinating all those efforts for the restaurant.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking at the original ordinance. Okay. So does it still state in the original ordinance if city council may revoke at the pleasure of the city council, the permit?
On the proposed?
Yeah.
Revision on Section D says a permit issued under the provisions of this article is revocable and shall be valid for the period of time allowed by the permitting authority.
And so the permitting authority would be the city council?
Well, it could be anybody. That's why it was worded specifically that. Because if, for whatever reason, fire changes their mind, we want them to have the ability to change their mind as well.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so I've got no questions. I think I'm good with the way that it was proposed. The only one thing, just talking about these permits, I guess, while we have Mr. McCoy here for the administration. Can you just find out and update the council, especially from the licensing board? I know the governor's state of emergency is going to end on June 15th. So with that is the permitted outdoor dining that has been allowed. So a lot of restaurants haven't been required to have their floor plan include the outdoors for their liquor license purposes. So some of those folks that may want to maintain that, can we find out if we're just being proactive in letting these businesses know that? Do you have an answer that as of June 15th, they'd be able to try to reapply because it would require a liquor license change to that?
Do you want to try to speak southward?
I apologize, this is slightly off, but just...
So I think to answer your question, the current permit application that we have in place requires all of those things right now. You can't get, if you have outdoor seating and you have a liquor license, you're not going to be granted that license, that permission, if the licensing authority, such as the liquor board, doesn't agree to it. And that's where the police department comes into play, as the licensing authority.
No, but during the, so there was some leniency on...
Correct.
The outdoor, so they didn't have to, for their liquor license, because each liquor license requires the floor plan. So you've got to identify where the liquor is going to be served. So if you haven't included your outdoor patio, you can't serve alcohol. So with COVID, the governor has come out and said, you don't need to do that. So as of June 15th, they now, if they want to and the city agrees with the licensing board, agrees that, okay, you've shown that it's reasonable and you want to continue to that, I'm just, June 15th, it ends. So I guess what I'm saying is, is I just want to make sure that we're being proactive in sending out letters to these businesses that may not be familiar with the fact that it's going to end on June 15th, that they just have an application process to say, hey, listen, I need to, I want to amend my liquor license to include this floor plan. And it's a simple floor plan adjustment, but I just want to make sure that we're sending out letters saying, as of June 15th, the state of emergency ends with that, is the ability to serve alcohol if it's not listed on your liquor license. And the other big one is the alcohol to go that was allowed for some of the businesses.
So as far as your first concern, I have, or we have, we are issuing a certificate of inspection for the outdoor seating based on alcohol, if it has it. So the licensing board is reviewing it through carry, through the police department. And they're being given a certificate based on the number of seats and a certificate of inspection that doesn't cost them a dime from me, from the fire, from us. Fire, myself and fire are signing off if there's alcohol involved. Okay? So we're already doing that. We're not going to relinquish that unless the board, the licensing board, the alcohol licensing board says otherwise.
No, but I guess what I'm saying is, as of June 15th, you have no authority to do that. It ends. So the ABCC requires that they fill out for their liquor license an amended floor plan to include their outdoor seating. So what I'm saying is, is I don't want them to lose the opportunity, right? If they currently have it. Because I don't know if it's in the government. So the governor's trying to file some extensions to some of the state guidelines that he had put during the state of the emergency. I don't know if that's included. I don't think it is. So what I'm saying is, is you've got restaurants that you folks have currently reviewed and said it's okay. But technically, they would be in violation as of June 16th, right? And it may be the 15th. I'm not sure what time that declaration really ends. But let's just say June 16th, they would no longer be able to serve alcohol unless they've actually formally filed a license application change with the licensing board and then submitted it to the ABCC for approval. So I guess I just want to be proactive for these businesses that think, because a lot of them are not following the guidelines. So I don't want them to be stuck and then realize that they can't do it and they've...
And they've already invested money in the outside infrastructure and things of that nature and then.
I will confirm that with Kerry.
Okay.
Okay, in the licensing part of it. But to my understanding is, we've been following, this board, that board, the alcohol board has been requesting those, that paperwork right along. Because they are doing a diagram on the back or giving us a seating capacity in an outlined area.
No, right. So, but I think that diagram has only been kept locally. So it never had, it never required the ABCC approval.
You're right, you're right.
So that's where the, and it's a minor detail, but that's now where it comes into.
I believe you're correct. I know you're correct in that. Whether, I don't, I'm not, I just can't confirm whether they've been forwarded it to Boston or not. But I do hear what you're saying.
Right, so, because I just want to make sure, and it could just be a technicality, but I just want to make sure that we're proactive so they're not losing anything. Especially if they've invested with the whole pandemic, they've gone out, they tried to invest to try to, you know, get some revenue and all that other stuff. And then you've got all that money tied up and then you realize it's not in your floor plan.
One of the things that caught my attention when you were talking about the new ordinance proposal is May 1st to November 1st by Counsel Pereira. That's the deadline that when we had our meeting with the administration, the mayor and so on and so forth, he'd like to see, we extended it as long as we thought we could through conversation in the office to give the benefit to all the businesses. However, if the weather's nice and somebody wants to extend that particular, I would make them file for another application, okay, to extend it from such and such a date. But the current cutoff is November 1st. So unless we change something, then we'd be violating those rules again. Just, I'm just going to tell you, if you want to extend it, fine, file for another application. We'll give you a 30-day extension if the weather's nice, you know, as long as you meet that criteria.
Yep.
Just to clarify with Counsel Pereira.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? You have a motion?
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, made by Counsel Kadeem. It's our second.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Motion to adopt.
It's a motion to adopt, made by.
Okay.
She needs a second.
Second, go ahead.
Seconded by Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted.
If I may, just for clarification, so this is going to go through first reading as amended with the amendments as presented by Corporation Council.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Item seven is a resolution to discuss outdoor dining seating for restaurants. This was referred to April 20th, 21, from the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism, I believe. This was originally put in last June. And it was looking for immediate development of policies and guidelines that outside seating and service be allowed at these establishments immediately, provided that the configuration of seating does not prohibit public access in front of the establishment and that these businesses be allowed to immediately utilize half of the site of our other designated area. It also says be it further resolved that once protocols are developed, proposed ordinance will be submitted to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation.
I'd make a motion that this be given leave to withdraw because Mr. Hathaway has done all the work and has a plan.
Motion leave to withdraw, made by Counsel Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Dionne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Made by Counsel Pereira. Seconded by Counsel Kadeem, all in favor? So voted.